All right.
I'd like to call to order the Radcliffe City Special Called Meeting for Monday, June 12th, 2023, 5:00 p.m. at Radcliffe City Hall. It is being livestreamed on Facebook. If you'll please rise for an invocation. Remain standing for a pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your abundant blessings. Father, we thank you for each and every city councilperson who sits at this desk. We thank you for the mayor, our city attorney. Father, we're thankful for all of the guidance and wisdom and stuff that they do for our community. Father, we ask that you bless our service members both here and abroad. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ashley, go. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Brown?
Here.
Deroche?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Merle?
Here.
Owens?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Thank you all. This called meeting is for first readings of ordinances adopting the city of Radcliffe's budget. Of course, all these are first readings, so all we need for these are just introductions. You don't really have to reread. Mr. Pike will do that every, for each one of the line items on here. So with that, we'll start with our first introduction for the first reading of the ordinance adopting city of Radcliffe's annual budget for fiscal year 2021, or, excuse me, July 1st, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Merle.
Thank you. This is the ordinance adopting the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of the city government, whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council has reviewed such budget proposal and made necessary modifications, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky. Section 1 that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, is hereby adopted as follows. Under anticipated revenues, fund balance carryover under general fund, $4,529,200. Under stormwater utility fund, $334,000. Ad valorem taxes under general fund, $2,144,300. Franchise fees under general fund, $1,100,000. Insurance premium taxes under general fund, $3,510,000. Occupational fees under general fund, $4,467,500. Fines, fees, forfeitures under general fund, $61,500. License and permit fees under general fund, $1,437,000. Recreation fees under general fund, $66,000. Debt proceeds under general fund, zero. Other revenues under general fund, $312,600. Under stormwater utility fund, $15,300. Intergovernmental revenues under general fund, $649,400. Under road LGEA funds, $457,000. Under stormwater utility fund, $960,000. Charge for services under general fund, $26,000. Under stormwater utility fund, $960,000. Total resources available under general fund, $18,303,500. Under road LGEA funds, $457,000. Under stormwater utility fund, $2269,300. Under appropriations, police department under general fund, $5,917,800. Administration department, $1 million under general fund, $1,739,000. Fire department under general fund, $3,510,800. Public works department under general fund, $1,602,600. Under road LGEA fund, $17,000. Parks and recreation department under general fund, $1,019,000. Economic development, planning and building department under general fund, $466,100. Capitalized fund appropriations under general fund, $4,48,200. Under road LGEA funds, $440,000. Under stormwater utility fund, $144,500. Stormwater utility under stormwater utility fund, $2,124,800. Total appropriations under general fund, $18,303,500. Road LGEA funds, $457,000. Stormwater utility fund, $2,269,300. That is first reading, Mayor.
All right. Next will be a first reading of the ordinance amending the city of Radcliffe's classification and compensation pay plan, strength table. Can we have an introduction?
I'll introduce.
Thank you, Ms. Merle.
Thank you. This is the ordinance amending the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan sanction employee strength table. Whereas the city council of Radcliffe, Kentucky, adopted an ordinance establishing the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan on the first day of July 2,001, whereas the city council's desires to amend said ordinance under the section entitled Employee Strength Table, as follows. Be it ordained by the city council of Radcliffe, Kentucky, as follows. The employee strength table is amended by adding and amending the table attached here, too. The remainder of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan shall remain the same. On the table, under police department, police lieutenant detective is amended funded strength from one to read zero. Police sergeant detective is amended from funded strength zero to read one. Detective drug task force is amended authorized strength from one to two. Funded strength amended from one to read two. Police officer funded strength amended from 21 to read 22. Reserve police officer part-time is amended from funded strength five to read zero. Evidence custodian one and two authorized strength is amended from one to read zero, funded strength from one to read zero. Dispatch supervisor authorized strength is amended from one to zero, funded strength from one to zero. Dispatcher one, two, and three authorized strength is amended from seven to read zero, funded strength is amended from seven to read zero. On the next page. Under fire department, sergeant firefighter slash inspector is added at grade six authorized strength one, funded strength one. Firefighter inspector is amended from authorized strength two to read one, funded strength from one to read zero. Deputy fire marshal one and two is amended authorized strength one to two and funded strength one to two. Code enforcement officer part-time is amended, excuse me, funded strength is one and amended to read zero. Public works department, maintenance operator one and two authorized strength is amended from seven to read nine, funded strength is amended from seven to read nine. Maintenance crew one, two is deleted in its entirety. Under parks and recreation department, parks worker one and two is amended authorized strength from two to read four, funded strength from two to four. Parks groundkeeper is deleted in its entirety. Under economic development, planning, and building department, building official is amended at authorized, excuse me, funded strength from one to read zero. Planner technician is created at pay grade six authorized strength one, funded strength one. Under stormwater department, maintenance operator one and two is amended at authorized strength from two to read four, funded strength from two to read four. Maintenance crew one and two is deleted in its entirety. That is a first reading, Mayor.
Then our last first reading is going to be the ordinance, an introduction of the ordinance for the city of Radcliffe, classification and pay, pay plan, salary, and equalization adjustment. Do we have an introduction? Ms. Owens, thank you.
Thank you. This is the ordinance amending the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan, salary, pay, equalization, and adjustment. Whereas the city council of Radcliffe, Kentucky, adopted an ordinance establishing the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan on the first day of July 2,000, whereas the city council's desires to amend said ordinance under the section entitled salary, pay, equalization, and adjustment, as follows. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Radcliffe, Kentucky, as follows. The salary, pay, equalization, and adjustment is amended by adding and amending the table attached here, too. The remainder of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan shall remain the same. And I usually don't read the table, Mayor. So that's a first reading.
Now, if there's any questions or anything before the next meeting, Chance, myself, or Ashley can help. We're more happy, just keep in mind that any changes that the council may want to make to what's been presented in the first reading, if there's changes that are made that would change the first reading structure, just because you'd have to have to change of the documents, correct, Chance? So, any questions or anything like that, just feel free to reach out, and we will try to answer those the best we can. With that, we just have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconding discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. That will bring us into our work session. She got the consideration for the street resurfacing. Here. So, on the agenda, we have the consideration of our street resurfacing bid, as you can see here. This is the estimated numbers that we have for our streets. This was delivered to us by Scotty's. Pavement is $99 per ton. So, any questions regarding their bits of metal? Now, sometimes that number usually comes in a little bit more or less. Of course, Chance can explain to you on our revenue side that depending on gas prices, when gas prices are up, obviously our, the amount of money comes in a little bit more, but that also drives the cost of blacktop up a little bit. So, it's kind of give and take. But that's what we typically, we kind of fall in the same pattern, I think, over the past few years, of spending this amount, so. Questions? And Scotty's is usually, I know the, but Scotty's is usually the one that typically bids it, and usually are the lowest bid. Questions? All right. We'll move on to the next one. All right. Changes to the handbook, sections 3.6.2, sections 3.6.3. Chance Fox. Come up here and talk about your changes. Just turn on, it's off. It's off. You can turn on. Top part. Push it up. This guy does $18 million budget.
Okay. What you have in front of you is the section 3.6.2. This would be, it's not an ordinance, this section is not really an ordinance, it's just, it's part of our employee handbook, policy and procedures that, it'll just have a vote for adoption, I guess, when it's presented at the next council meeting. This entire section, 3.6.2, and 3.6.3, are the police and fire pay plan. It's what governs, in a sense, how we pay police and fire personnel. And everything that is on this document is a direct byproduct of what was last discussed at the budget work session last week by, by the council, and at least for discussion and kind of majority vote, I should, I guess the best way to say it, is I took that information that we discussed and I transposed it into this document. This is a document that obviously already existed, and the way I treat this document is simply, I don't make any deletions until it's been approved, and then the deletions will be removed, but you'll see, you'll see strike-throughs under previous dollar amounts, and you'll see underlines under new amounts, and those underlying amounts are what was discussed at the budget work session for police and fire pay effective July 1st with the new budget as a result of our talks. So, just, just a highlight, I guess, what you're looking at there. This is the third amendment, I guess, to this policy. You can see that it was done on April 25th, 2021, is when we first addressed police and fire pay since 2015. 2015 is when we did the last revision, and there is a separate section in the handbook that still exists that precedes this section. I think it's like section 3.6.1. You'll have to copy that with you, but it basically, it just outlined at that time what the, what the pay was for police and fire, which at that time, I think it was $32,000 entry salary. That section was almost completely redone on April of 2021. Then it was amended, there were some changes, I think, that we decided to make regarding the caps of certain positions and how we treat retirees with how much money they get when they become retirement eligible. So we made those changes later, in February 15th of 2022, almost a year later. And then obviously, this would be the next revision, based on a June 20 date, which would be the next council meeting if we proceed forward with this. And what you see there basically is the starting salary for police officers in this first section, and then the same for the starting salary for firefighters in the next section, which is 3.6.3. It also outlines the minimum salary for all of your command positions that would be above police officer or above firefighter, be it sergeant, lieutenant, deputy chief or chief. It outlines what those minimum salaries would be, and those minimum salaries are a direct byproduct of what the entry level salary is for the firefighter or the police officer. So as those entry level salaries are adjusted, as we have done, based off of the reasons that we did it, then all of the minimum salaries for those command positions obviously increase accordingly as well, just as they were done previously on the other two amendments. The other items remain unchanged. For example, the 2% annual step increase upon an officer or firefighter's anniversary date, that remains unchanged, that's still 2%. We did also introduce some language in here that, let me take that back. We had discussions at the budget meeting on pay for existing people, if they were retirement eligible, on what they would get for conversion purposes over from, to convert them as a result of these new hires being paid at a higher rate and giving them full credit for their years of service in relation to what a new hire would have. So for conversion purposes, that language is not directly in here, because what this governs, again, is basically the entry salary, how we handle the annual 2% steps for each year that someone is a police officer or a firefighter. You'll see in the chart what, how incrementally those salaries from years one through 25 go up. And reason it's 25 is because under current Kentucky retirement law, to be fully eligible for your pension, it's 25 years of service or hazardous. It used to be 20, but that changed several years ago. Outside of that, that is basically the working document that handles how we proceed forward with new hires and their salaries, as well as when someone becomes promotion eligible and they get promoted up, what their salary would be. Either they get the base salary at a minimum, or depending on what their salary is at the time of conversion, the plan talks about you get 10% pay increase. It's whatever is the higher of the two, so that didn't remain, that stays the same, there was no changes on that. The biggest thing is, what's changed is the entry salary, and then what the minimums are for each command position, because again, they're a direct relation to what the entry salary is.
Chance, the only thing I don't see on here, and if I remember from the last time we did this, it was in this portion about a cap. Are we capping, not capping?
So again, yeah, none of that's changed, so there is no cap. So once someone becomes retirement eligible based on years of service, they would continue to receive the $1,000 annual pay increase. It's not based off the 2% annual step as it is up until your 25th year of retirement eligibility. So if someone stays their 26th year, they would get a $1,000 pay increase, no longer get the 2%. So that's unchanged.
Okay. So, but we don't, we don't, last time we had language that said something about the word cap, but that word's not in here, so.
Yeah, I believe that, that was probably removed on the February 15, 2022 revision.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just remember seeing it.
It used to be on there, and then I think the council had discussions about that, and it was voted that that, there should not be a cap.
Right.
And not to cap out your tenured employees.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Let me give you, I know you all wanted, obviously, some numbers in front of you so you can kind of see what that breakdown is. Any questions? Reach out to Chance. Anybody else before I, before I send him down the interstate?
If anybody has any questions throughout the week, obviously, let, you can let us know, or we don't have to explain any part of that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chance.
Murray Warner. Murray, Ed.
Yeah, it's here.
I can reach out to him. He went downstairs, going to be a lot longer.
Oh, did he? Oh, there he is. All right. Murray, come on up.
So, number three on the agenda is planning and zoning with Murray. We have the portion located at Joe Prather and Patrick Parkway, and this is the property, if you remember, kind of filled our council room at one time with a lot of questions. And so it was, been revisited again several months later, but I think the revision that they had presented at the planning commission kind of calmed some of those concerns at that neighborhood that it was adjacent to it. So, you go over pretty well, I believe, didn't Murray?
Yeah. Before we even held the meeting, I had a few people come talk to me, and they seemed like their concerns were addressed with the plan revisions. The biggest thing that they didn't want to see a connection of the road system into Whipperwell Lane. So, the revised site plan, subdivision plan, the preliminary subdivision plan shows the connection going across Brushy Court Creek with a bridge. So, it also was kind of a two-fold solution, that they weren't coming directly out onto 361, which the state highway department was not going to approve at the location they planned, which was around 400 feet from the intersection of 361 and 313. So, yeah, overall, they'd come back with the request to rezone that portion of the property at the intersection of 313 and 361 from urban agriculture to planned unit development zone. And the total site acreage is approximately 35 acres. Adjacent zoning is agriculture, commercial, R6, PUD, and Hardin County R1, which is the neighborhood where Whipperwell is located. The planning commission did recommend approval of the zone map amendment from agriculture to PUD. So that covers the zone change, the proposed zone change. Didn't know if you had any questions on that. If there's no questions, I'll move forward to the next item, which is the preliminary plat of North Haven subdivision PUD. So, the proposed preliminary plat, as discussed, contains approximately 35 acres.
Murray, will you show that document so they can know which one to be on?
Yeah. There's a zoomed in and a zoomed out copy, so the zoomed in is a little easier to see. So it'd be the preliminary PUD plat of North Haven subdivision. So in summary, it's about 35 acres, 84 total lots, 82 single-family detached dwelling lots, two lots for open space, which will consist of retention basins. And then also, the density is low-density residential PUD, which is about 2.34 lots per acre in terms of the density, which is less than four units per acre, classifying it as a low-density residential PUD. And the Radcliffe Planning Commission approved the preliminary plat of North Haven subdivision PUD. It will also require the city council to approve that as well. It wasn't a recommendation, they actually had to approve it in this case, and it requires, based on the regulations, that the planning commission approve it and the city council approve it. Little different, because the zone change is a recommendation from the planning commission. Any questions on the preliminary plat?
I think everybody seemed to be happy with the solution. Yeah.
Yeah, and as far as where they're coming out.
Is this 313?
Yes. They're going to be planning to come out, if you look at that drawing, across from Wisland Drive intersection, and it's a full access median opening there. So the medians that are on 313, since they widened it, the state actually left that open across from that intersection, full access, meaning lefts in, lefts out. Also, at that location, the state did put a stub out for an entrance, so it appears that that was put in for future access to the property, with that in mind.
So there's only one entrance exit to this property?
Yes, at this time, and they do have to get that permitted through Kentucky Transportation Cabinet through an encroachment permit. Like I say, it looks like the state was planning for that access to serve that property by putting that asphalt apron in.
Well, I think what she's asking, that the other one, we had two exits.
So, that's just that one plat, so they're going to be building on those others, so that part's not shown on this particular, okay?
Yeah, they could potentially have another access to the property at a later date, because one of the rezonings that was previously done was for R6, which is for multifamily dwellings like apartments. So, the state was discussing with them a possible entrance, moving it from 400 feet south of 361 and 313 on 361, moving it south. I think it was at least 1,200 feet south of that intersection versus the 400 feet they originally planned. So, they could come back later and request for that other portion of the development, another access out of 361, but it would be a long ways away from that intersection.
All right. Murray, then you're going to need these on the agenda for approval at Tuesday night.
Yes, I will. Oh, the other one was the site plan on here, but the site plan looks a lot like the plat, so. Yeah. Didn't know if there was any questions on that, but they do have to show building footprints on there. Any kind of structure locations is what it really specifies, so.
Murray's been pretty busy the last two months, so.
Yeah.
It's a good thing.
It's really good.
Hair's not turning yet, so I don't think you want it, we need to start wearing it just a little bit more.
Well, when I start wearing it is when the hair starts falling out, you know? I can deal with gray hair.
Hey, did you get, did you talk to Andy today?
I called him. I left a message.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Murray.
All right, you're welcome.
All right. I think it brings us to the end of our work session. Let's see, so we'll have all this, I think I threw on my, where's my work session coverage? Here it is, I got it. No, that's not it. There it is. All right. So our next meeting will be June 20th, 12, it's at 5:30 here. I'm trying to think if there's any questions or anything before that meeting, just feel free to reach out, I know it's our budget meeting. So, I guess I'll start with Jerry. Jerry, you got anything?
No. I don't have anything tonight. No? I don't.
Yes. We're having Juneteenth celebration at Optimus Park this Saturday at 4:30. Also, the NAACP for Hardin County will be having theirs at Colvin Dinner at 6:30 this Friday. And then next Tuesday, for those that want to learn how to improve their public speaking, we have Toastmasters at Two Vets here in Radcliffe at 6:30.
All right. That's it? Ms. Merle?
Are you going to announce the Moonshine Festival?
No, you can't.
Tuesday is the Radcliffe Small Business Alliance General Membership Luncheon at Colvin, that is Tuesday, the 20th. This Friday, the 16th, is a ribbon cutting for a new hair salon. This Friday, the 16th, is a ribbon cutting for a new hair salon, Gloria Hair Salon. They are located at 529 North Wilson Road. That'll be at noon. And also at Bourbon Oaks Trail up next to the knife, Red Hill Cutlery and Bourbon, Boundary Oaks is the Moonshine Festival. This is their second annual, I believe, Moonshine Festival and it is from 10 to 6 this Saturday.
Ms. Owens?
Sir, I won't steal your thunder, but I will thank you for your hard work this weekend with the NFL attendees slash Hall of Famers that was there and, and that your son keeps telling me he's going to be taller than me by next month. But it was, it was a great showing down at Dolly Park, but we had a lot of things going on that weekend, but at the same time, but I'll, I'll let you talk about it.
Yeah, that was good, we had a good time. We had a good time.
It was good.
Nothing, all right. No, we did, we had a good time, Ms. Owens. I know, I was able to sit here for a few minutes out there, but we were running around and we want to thank the Radcliffe Hurricanes and Purnell and Dr. Coffey for putting this all together for us, but it was, we had to, obviously we shared as much as we could on Facebook and stuff, but we had two Hall of Famers, Super Bowl champs that showed up at the park and had a great time, they got to enjoy it, I got to spend a little quality time with both of them. Great guys, both are down to earth and really enjoyed their company and, and what they brought to the community, look forward to coming back next year. And so, but as everyone up here knows, when you do an event, you're the first one there and sometimes you're the last one to leave. Me and Dr. Coffey were, a couple of coaches were the last one to leave the park and Ms. Owens was there filming some of it, so we had a good time with it all, but, so thank them and want to thank all the sponsors and everyone that believed in it, look forward to it next year. You touched on a few things already, my cooking partner.
Oh, yes, congratulations.
Yes, my, I've heard Jeff Gregory, I was told by Councilman Marty Falkerson that Jeff Gregory wasn't very happy about that. It really got under him, so I'm glad it worked. But we look forward to keeping that alive and then doing something again. July 3rd, Thunder Over Radcliffe will be happening again. And so we were doing that out here at City Hall like we always have been. Look forward, we got a new firework company, so we'll hope everything goes smooth and, which we plan on it going smooth, we just hopefully put on a good show like they have the past few years. And so that'll be July 3rd, we'll be putting information out over the next few weeks on that, but it'll be typically the same thing we do every year out front. And so, I'm trying to think, what else? Father's Day?
Food trucks that day too?
Well, that's a food trucks, that kind of, I know funnel cakes we did not have last year, so we'll make sure funnel cakes, funnel cakes, Tim, will be out there.
And sir, that's also the first cadet summer training family day.
Got you, July 3rd.
For the 10 regiment, so July 3rd.
And then Father's Day is this Sunday? Is that correct? 18th? All right. And then what is that one, Ashley?
She cuts himself.
Oh, yeah, the festival Freeman Lake, NAACP is having their Freedom Fest at Freeman Lake at, from 10 to 6, and that's on the 19th. And so that's on Monday, June 19th, right? All right, with that, I guess we don't really need a motion to adjourn, but thank you all, we'll see you all on Tuesday.
Thank you. Thank you.